Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting Monday, June 11th, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9th, 2018, said notice was posted in the minutes of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata has been excused. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the opening season, we have truth, the whole truth, nothing left to be done. Thank you. Correspondents, reflected, Mr. Malin, Ms. Beaman, Matt Howard have all been sworn for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tropoli. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, April 23rd, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Moretti. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Orozco. Okay. Regular meeting, May 7th, 2018.
No, only nine people vote.
Right.
I mean, seven vote.
I heard you say Moretti.
No, I was, that was my mistake.
No problem.
Regular meeting, May 7th, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Vouchers.
We do have one voucher for Mr. Tropoli.
Okay.
I'll pass it around.
We'll vote on that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Correspondent.
Yes, I do have correspondence.
Okay.
First, there's an application on tonight's agenda. It is actually the last application for Robert Deloris Kowalski.
Right.
I had some conversations today with both attorneys, our conflict attorney and the attorney handling this application, and there is another situation come up with their notice and an easement on the property, so they have decided to reschedule that application to September 17th, and they will renotice for that.
September 17th.
So that will not be heard tonight.
17th. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience for case number BA 18-02, Robert and Deloris Kowalski? Seeing all hands, this case will be rescheduled to September 17th at 7:30 with further notice.
Yes. I have a letter also from Todd Cohen. He is the attorney for Gabriel Sayoun, who is also on tonight's agenda. He said, "As you are aware, the undersigned represents Gabriel Sayoun. With regard to the above referenced matter, this letter shall serve as formal notice to the zoning board of adjustment that my client is formally withdrawing case number BA 0603A. He was able to satisfy the concerns of the land use officer, Matthew Howard, as it relates to the present and future use of the site and will not require site plan approval at this time. On behalf of his client, he wants to thank the board and their professionals on their time that they spent on this matter."
Okay.
So that will not be heard.
This was a two-story house, correct?
This was a second building on a commercial property on Route 9 that had previously gotten a use variance to be residential for his family. It was found to be a violation later. The way the resolution was written back in 2007 allowed for a reversion back to commercial use after the residential use was done. I spoke with Jack Malin. We talked about the matter. We agreed that going back to commercial would be permitted without site plan so long as it made sense from a parking standpoint, and it was a single user in the building. That's what they proposed at this time. They were coming with multiple tenants. Parking wasn't making sense, so that's why they were coming here. They've since scaled that back, so if they ever do go back to multiple tenants or non-permitted use, they'll be back before the board, but they're going to take their one-time shot at going back to commercial without site plan.
Okay. Okay. Anyone in the audience for case number BA 0603A? Gabriel Savon?
Sayoun.
Sayoun. Seeing none, this case is withdrawn with prejudice or no prejudice?
It would be a new application if they come back, so.
Okay.
Okay. I also have a letter from Thomas Hirsch. He is the attorney for Sea Free Plaza. They were on tonight's agenda as well. He asked that the board please carry this application August 13th. We granted the board an extension of time to act on this through August 13th, 2018.
Through August 13th or 30th?
13th.
They won't give us till the 30th?
No.
If it gets postponed, what are they going to do?
I guess he'll give us an extension that night. I don't know.
Just to be clear, he had a heart attack last week, so he's not really in a position to talk about much right now.
Who, Mr. Hirsch?
Okay.
So he was at a meeting on Wednesday night, and by Thursday morning, he was in the ER. So he is, his assistant is trying to make sure the scheduling is okay, but he's, that's probably why you haven't heard.
Yeah, but he's just the planner engineer, correct?
No, he's the attorney.
Oh, the attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Well, who was their planner that didn't show up that night?
No, the planner was, the engineer was the one. Fitzgerald is the engineer.
Fitzgerald, okay. I got the two confused. Sorry about that. Okay, so they gave it. Well, it's a pretty good ways out to August 13th. I tried to reach them in a month and see if we could get an extension to August 30th, because if we can't.
I would just get ahold of his assistant. That's what I would do.
Okay.
At this point, I don't know if he's got it for her yet.
Okay.
Because that's kind of tough having it on the same night. So, okay. Anyone in the audience for case number BA 17-15, Sea Free Plaza LLC? Seeing none, this case would be adjourned to August 13th with no further notice? No further notice?
No further notice.
Okay. No further notice.
And I have one more item. I sent the, all the board members of both the planning board and the zoning board an email back on May 23rd. There is a new requirement that all board members and council members must take a mandatory stormwater management class, and it has to be done by July 1st. In my original email.
It's a webinar, by the way.
Yeah, it takes about 45 minutes.
Okay.
But every board member has to take it by July 1st. You have to also send me an email saying when you took it, because the town has to maintain a list of everyone that took the course and the date they took it. It has to be included in their stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Okay.
So if you could kindly get that done and get it to me, I would appreciate it. So far, Mr. Posh has complied. Thank you.
But I don't know when I did it.
You told me over the weekend.
Okay.
So it's one of those dates. Okay? And that's all the correspondence I have.
Too many minutes has gone by.
Very exciting stuff. Right. Too many minutes.
I also, I think I sent a reminder, too. So if you don't see the original email, my reminder, I just sent on Friday, June 8th. So the link is also in that email.
Okay. Any passwords to get on to it, or is it just there?
I believe it's just there, and you have to take little quizzes or something along the way, and so.
Okay.
I don't have to take it, so I didn't sit through it.
Environmental, Matt, environmental right now. Y'all are lean and heavy on the DOT or the DEP, correct?
In what way?
Environmental issues?
For compliance issues, yeah. You know, our ordinance is not up-to-date in wetlands laws and things like that, so we refer a lot to enforcement from DEP on that.
Okay. Wait, do you have somebody that's strictly doing that now, or no?
Not specifically. We have, you mean, one of the code officers?
Right.
No, because we have a zone approach to the town. We have contacts at the DEP. That case-by-case, we hand them over and follow up on them, but not one specific guy.
Okay.
We have one hazmat guy. That's it.
Okay. Moving on. Case before the board, case number BA.
We have resolutions to do. Sorry.
We skipped, oh, I was moving on. Resolutions. Case number BA 18-10, Peter Gosa, resolution granting pool and retaining wall setback variance. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, Posh, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Merton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 15-19, Gross &amp; Gross Associates LLC, resolution granting a one-year extension of time. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, Posh, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Now, case number BA 18-01, Freehold Church Christ. Expansion of non-conforming conditional use variance in minor site plan. Description: Is application of Freehold Church of Christ as applicant owner seeking an expansion of a non-conforming use, use variance in minor site plan approved, approval to convert and expand an existing gravel parking area to asphalt at stormwater basin east of the principal structure and south of the proposed parking area. Expansion and reconstruction of the existing sidewalk that provides access from the parking area to handicap accessible parking spaces to the main entrance of the church on premises known as Block 141, Lot 20.02, 46 Strickland Road. Expiration date, July 12th, 2018. You may have a seat if you would like.
Okay.
There's a mic right in the middle of the table.
Appreciate it.
Come on up, Bill.
Yeah, how many witnesses?
I have two witnesses.
Want to bring them all up and have them sworn in?
Correct. Line.
Gentlemen, please face your right hand. Swear or affirm that testimony is pleasing to the truth, the whole truth, nothing left to be done.
I do.
I do.
And for the record, sir, may I have your name?
Yes, Lion Paulette. Lion, L-I-A-N, last name, last name is Paulette, P-O-L-E-T-T-E.
William T. Wentzien. The last name is W-E-N-T-Z-I-E-N. Engineer for the applicant with Abington Engineering LLC.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll qualify them whenever they get ready to testify.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would start with.
Sit down. Relax.
Of course I have.
That's okay.
Mr. Paulette. Mr. Paulette, you've just given your name. You are an evangelist with the Church of Christ?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you've been authorized by the board to speak on behalf of the church? Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And I just wanted to give a brief overview.
Excuse me. Hang on just a second here.
That's good stuff.
Okay. Okay. We have a person that needs to recuse himself.
Oh, sure.
And let him.
Yeah, I work with Mr. Paulette, so I just feel that it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have a full board. Mr. Moretti.
Thank you. You got it. Moretti.
Man, I'm finally, now I'm wanting to go to more argue.
You want to go to more argue? Got it now.
I got it now. Mr. Hughes, I don't, you can't sit. You need to excuse yourself.
Okay. I'm new to this, though.
Actually, I think he can.
Thank you. You've got an early night.
Good night, sir.
Thank you. I'd let him say. Mr. Paulette, just to continue, you've indicated that you were an evangelist authorized to speak on behalf of the church?
Yes, Counselor.
Okay. And one of the questions that came about are the number of seats in the church? Can you tell us how many?
Yes, it's 145.
Can you pull that mic just a little closer? It's in the center.
Oh, just pull it over.
Yep.
Yeah, there you go. Now you picked up.
Okay, it's 145 seats.
Okay, and that's the capacity of the church in terms of seating? Your congregation, your general, normal attendance is approximately what?
Between 60 and 70 every Sunday.
Okay, and you do have, you do meet on Sundays? Is that correct? You have services on Sundays?
Yes, we do.
And what time, what are the hours on Sunday?
On Sunday mornings, we have a morning worship from 9:30 a.m., and we get out there at around 12:30 p.m.
Okay.
And also on Sunday evenings, we have evening worship at 5:00 p.m., which overs at 6:00. We get out by about 6:30 p.m.
Okay. And do you have a Bible study during the week?
Yes, we do have a Bible study on Wednesday evenings at 7:00 p.m., and it usually be one hour, and we usually over by 8:00 p.m., but we get out around 8:30 p.m.
How many do you have at Bible study?
At the Bible study, it usually be around sometimes 10 to 12 people.
Okay. And you are not proposing in this application to do any changes to the church itself, any exterior/interior increase in capacity or any of the alike? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And really, what you're doing is taking your existing gravel parking lot, improving it by paving it, delineating the lines, the fire lanes, and the parking spaces. Is that right?
Yes, correct, Counselor.
Okay. And right now, there's no delineation of parking spaces? People kind of go in and.
Yes.
Try to be orderly?
Yes, we are trying to make it safe for the patrons.
Okay. And again, no other changes in use or intensity?
No.
That's all I have.
I just have one question. On special occasions like Easter, any special, do you ever have an overflow in parking?
Not really an overflow, no, because the regular attendance is between 60 and 70. With Easter and like Christmas, we will get around 80.
Okay.
You know, yeah.
So it's not really a major, do you have any special events, like have dinners at the church, or?
No, we don't have dinners.
Fellowships, or?
No, we usually have a singing fellowship, yes, but it, there is no overflow with the fellowship neither.
Okay.
Yes.
So do you feel that the proposed parking is going to be able to satisfy any fellowship, any service, anything that you do at the church?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Is there any other questions from the board members to the pastor or evangelist? Professionals?
I have a question for Mr. Malin. Is there a standard to be used for parking spaces on churches?
Yes.
Yes. 134.
Yep. Yeah, our engineer will go through the parking and the requirements and whatnot.
Okay.
Okay, so now I'll call Mr. Wentzien, and you've been sworn. You've stated your name, your engineer. Why don't you give us your credentials?
Yes, again, William T. Wentzien, for the record. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1982, a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 1989. I am currently the appointed engineer and planner for the borough of Pemberton, Burlington County, and currently the appointed engineer for the borough of Freehold, Bummuth County, and I have participated as engineer and planner for the preparation of the application.
Thank you, sir. And your education?
My education is a Bachelor of Engineering in, from Old Dominion University in Norfolk, Virginia, in 19, if I dare say, 1976.
Yes, sir. We accept your qualifications, sir.
Thank you. And you prepared the plans which were submitted as part of this application?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and I have reviewed the exhibit list.
Is he going to be testifying as a planner and engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's do the engineering first.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's the easier part. I do have the exhibit list, and Mr. Wentzien does have another exhibit that we would like to mark if we can. I believe that would be A9, Eileen. Okay. And Bill, why don't you just explain what that is and.
A9.
Here, why don't I hand it out?
And we have it also as reduced copies for everybody here.
He's going to come around.
He's coming around.
He's got it. He's got it, Eileen.
Thank you.
Take care of your knee there.
Thank you. And there's a large one you might.
It's on the board.
Yeah, you might want to mark.
Is this going to be secretary?
He can bring it back.
He can, he'll bring it and hand it out, but let me give one to the professionals. How many do you have?
I have 12.
Oh, you got it.
Exactly 12. Don't necessarily have that one. Here's the mark.
I might. Just leave one away for me.
I think I have. It's the same thing.
Keep the signs, sir.
This is a.
Keep the sign.
There's two there.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Right. Okay. And, Mr. Wentzien, the site itself consists of, well, let's give the prelim and then I'll let you go into it. How's that?
No problem.
So the site itself consists of approximately 2.98 acres?
2.98 acres and the R-4 residential zone known as Block 141, Lot 20.02, fronting on Strickland, Strickland Road, very close to the intersection with Scenic.
Okay.
Scenic Road.
And I probably could have answered it, but the property has been occupied as a house of worship for many years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so why don't you just run through the proposal on the site plan?
What you have is a piece of property, again, 2.98 acres. It has an existing house of worship for the Freehold Church of Christ. It contains 145 seats. The footprint of the building, as it touches the ground, for record, is 5,328 square feet. It has existing access off of Strickland Road. It's an existing paved access due to the constraints of the site with the building being approximately 29.51 feet off of the Westerly property line. The existing access into the site is 23 feet wide. It's paved up to a point, about 40, up to a point of about 40 feet or so behind the building, and then the balance of the area that is, is and has been used for parking is a gravel, it's a gravel area that takes up an area of about 200 feet by 140 feet. The surrounding uses are either some open space of the township to the west or all residential use. The proposal, starting on page three of the plans.
If we're looking at the board that you're looking right up top there, Bill?
Yes.
Right up there?
Oh.
Okay, so that's what they're looking at. So, that depicts obviously the, the proposed improvements and there's a...
The proposed improvements on the existing site.
Right, and there's a little, you can see that little U shape that's kind of a semicircle in it. That's the existing gravel area, is that right?
No, the existing gravel area, who's doing the hand?
Probably Jen.
Oh, somebody over there.
Definitely not me.
Is it easier for me to, to do it? I have a pointer over there, or what's, how's it easy for me to...
It's up to you. I think the issue is that they're proposing to pave the existing gravel and delineate the...
Correct.
And I just want to delineate where the gravel is.
I, I've just got one question.
Yep.
You.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the red line, that's existing gravel area, correct?
On the hand, on the...
On A9, correct.
...presented tonight.
Yes.
Correct.
It's sheet three with three additions.
Bill, the answer is yes.
The red is gravel and the blue is going to be the existent, the proposed reconfigured pavement for safe circulation.
Okay, well, I, I've got a question now for Jennifer and Jack. If you look at the proposed paving, they need a variance into the setback.
Yes. The buffer only.
Okay.
Right. Correct.
Not a farmland buffer though.
Right.
No, I know, I, I'm just asking, that's, that's going to be a variance. Because I didn't see anything in the advertisement that said a variance.
Yeah, I think...
Okay, conditional use variance, okay.
Right.
Cool. That could be under a conditional use?
Let me just set the stage a little bit.
Okay, please.
So, this is not our typical use variance where the applicant has to prove site suitability in the positive or negative. This is a conditional use in the zone.
Okay.
So, that means that the governing body has found that this use is appropriate in the zone, given certain parameters. And the issue that they don't comply with is the lot area.
Okay.
So, the requirement is five acres, they're at two something, correct?
Right, 2.98.
2.98.
Almost three. But it's existing.
Correct.
So, what they're proposing to do is to better delineate their parking, because right now it's just a gravel area, so it's kind of haphazard parking.
Correct.
So, to pave it and delineate it, and they're compliant with their parking with respect to the number of seats, which is why it was important to get that on the record, because we weren't clear on that initially. So, this proposal demonstrates compliant parking plan for the number of seats that they're proposing, I'm sorry.
And then, but there's, let me just ask your applicant for one second, there's no plans to expand the building or extend the congregation, correct?
No, there's no plans for that.
We're just basically delineating the parking space for the existing congregation.
Correct.
Okay, so as a result of paving it and delineating it and making sure that it's compliant with the aisle width and the parking space width and having adequate circulation, they extend into the perimeter buffer.
Okay.
So, they need a C variance for the perimeter buffer only on, I mean, the existing situation with the driveway extends into that perimeter buffer on the one side. So, that's existing. So, it's really just talking about the set, the area immediately adjacent to Lot 22.02.
Correct.
Which is really two parking spaces and part of one.
Correct.
So, it's like two and a...
Quarter.
A quarter. And so, you know, while I don't mean to take away Mr. Wenson's thunder, I would take no exception to the board granting relief considering the fact that number one, the use is existing, number two, the existing parking configuration, in my opinion, is less safe than this parking configuration. Number three, there's a, I will say, Carrie, there's a letter from Shari with respect to the landscaping.
Right.
And if you're willing to comply with that and to make sure, I would pay particular attention to that corner where you're extending into that buffer. You know, right now you have a couple of little landscape things that were there. If we could beef that up a little bit to, to create a bit more solid visual buffer to the satisfaction of Shari, I would take absolutely no exception to the extension into that buffer, because I firmly believe that this is a way safer condition on the existing site than exists today.
Right. So, my, going back, the burdens of proof...
I'm sorry.
The burdens of proof...
They're way lower.
I know, that's why I'm asking this question.
It's as if it's a bulk variance.
Correct.
Basically, they have to, so, the issue that they have to demonstrate is that the deviation from the five acres versus the three acres, let's just say, it's, it's as if it's a bulk variance. And they need to put the testimony on the record as if that's what it is.
Okay.
And then this is an additional variance on top of that.
Okay.
So...
That's fine.
Bill, if you could just focus on that, that'd be great. And then, Jack?
Mr. Chairman, just, yes, just so you, a little more of the history. The applicant was before this board in 1990 and 1992. They, they previously got a variance for lot area because the areas haven't changed. They were same then needing five, that, at that time they put testimony on the record that there was no land for them to buy. So, that was one. Two, they also got a, a side setback variance for their, for their building because they have 29.51 and they need 30. And then lastly, they got a waiver for the curb and sidewalk and, and parking lot curb was felt at that time to leave it in its natural state. The water ran off over into the gravel area, now they're redoing the gravel area, paving it and directing it and, as, as Jen described, but you get into the engineering portion, they're now creating a, a basin to take care of the water, detain the 100 year and then the overflow goes out. And we're doing Mr. Wenson's testimony for him, but just so the board understands where we are. That's basically where we are. I have some questions, just so long as he delineates the, the height of the, I guess, the overflow area to make sure it doesn't flow on the neighbor's property and it just comes out to the road. Now, that's if 100 year storm, 9.4 inches in 24 hours, if you exceed that, that's what happens when it overflows. That pretty much covers it. I have a couple of questions, I'll let him testify and then we'll go. But that kind of gives you the background, both Jen and myself, with the history of this site and, and what type of proofs that they need.
And, Mr. Wenson, you concur with the synopsis as just given by both Ms. Beam and Mr. Mallon, correct?
I absolutely do.
Okay, and just quickly, looking at the letter from CME, which is your certified tree expert, we will concur, we will do items one through seven as requested and she does note the two waivers for the buffers, which again, we're asking for those waivers, and that's item number eight on the CME letter from Shari Spiro.
Okay, while you're there, I'm, I'm going to look over to Mr. Howard here. He needs to interrupt you there and put some testimony on the record real quick.
So, the property, a couple of months ago was served a violation because of some tree clearing that had to do with a different project altogether from this. It was sewer line connection and there were some trees that had been cut down in the area they were doing work. We've just received an application today actually for that, but because it normally has to come through the boards for Woodlands Management, I'm going to most likely work with Shari Spiro. Jen brought it up even, beefing up with the buffer on one side. So, I think there's an opportunity to replace the trees that were cut down and find a solution. So, if we could have that as a condition of the approval, just that that violation's satisfied, we'll be able to work on that at a later date.
Ron, hey, I, I would like to ask you this, Ron. It, it says, you know, Ms. Shapiro, Ms. Shapiro is, you know, asking them to get a tree clearing permit. Would it be appropriate for them to include the trees that they cleared in that permit? And then technically, I don't think we would even need a, need a conditional use on that.
It would probably be cleaner to just add it as a separate condition to address it.
You would? Okay. Okay, but they're still going to be required to get that permit, so couldn't they include that permit, those trees with this permit that she's requesting?
They amend what they have.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, we can, we can add that one tree that Ms. Spiro was referring to into our, the permit that we've applied for today.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to...
Okay.
But then Mr. Tropoli will still make it a condition if you choose to approve us at...
We should, just to be clear.
Correct, and I agree with that.
I'm just trying to clarify it and get it...
No, I agree with, I think that's, that would be cleaner and...
Okay, because if not, you'd have to come back to the board.
Right. Yes.
That, that's what Mr. Howard is trying to eliminate.
No, absolutely, I understand. I spoke with them and we totally concur with that, we appreciate the efforts.
Okay.
And so, again, we'll concur, other than the waivers that we've requested and I think have been delineated by your experts also for the, the buffers. And then just on, I think we should probably zip to...
Yeah, the engineering.
Mr. Mallon, because, right, there are a couple of items and, Bill, let's just, go to the, the letter of June 6th, 2018. Okay, and again, I don't think there's anything on the first page, no site, the signage is not changing.
Correct.
Okay, we've provided what we needed to do. Now, on the water service, it's currently serviced by Public Water. You want to just talk about that? Item B10.
The site is currently served by Public Water, about two inch line, and there's some information that'll be provided on there as to the location. Since, since the original site was first worked out, public sewer and Public Water were brought into the site subsequent to, to the original building at first being put in. So, that'll be located and put on the plans. We were able to locate where the sanitary sewer was to jump to the next slide for another item for a second, and that is on the plans. But it's a two inch water line, they're going to be required to do some location, fight for the work, particularly in the area of the basin, because if there is any kind of conflicts, then the water line would just be rerouted around the basin as the sanitary sewer currently is. So, there's no problem. The public, Public Water is there, it will be maintained through the project.
You want to talk about the swell, the overflow swell?
Yeah, the, the engineer raised a, a question. The, the existing site collects its water in a general runoff situation now and goes into all previously put in recharge trenches or trench drains or anything. What, what we have done is to allow for the drainage to remain overland in a, in a unconcentrated way as it does now. And basically, because we are delineating with pavement, we can more better control where the overflow goes and we're going to put it towards an above-ground basin. An above-ground basin, it'll have a sand bottom to allow for some infiltration and being above-ground, the maintenance is much cleaner and easier as opposed to underground stone which could collect or choke up over time. And the engineer has requested some additional follow-up information to assure that under a 100 year storm condition, everything stays properly channelized in a safe way towards Strickland Road. That is only for the 100 year storm. The two-year and 10-year, which are usually also analyzed for, the two-year and 10-year are 100% contained within the basin. So, under a two-year frequency and a 10-year frequency, there's no anticipated extension of the water beyond the basin area at all. This is due to the fact that the, the site has extremely low flows.
And, and you have no problem with Mr. Tropoli putting in a resolution that it'll be a condition of approval that you provide the documentation and the calculations to Mr. Mallon to his satisfaction as to the, the overflow swell, is that correct?
That, that's correct, I have no problem with that at all.
Okay. And I, we spoke briefly, the, the required number of spaces for this use based on the number of seats is, is 49 spaces?
For the 145 seats, the required number is 40, the required number is...
Nine.
Forty-nine and the sign...
I think I testified to that, Joe. I'm just kidding, sorry.
Utilizing the existing gravel space and, and...
And our proposed number of spaces is...
Yeah, and the concern of the, of the church for its needs, the site is proposing 59. Out of the 59, two of them are handicapped spaces in the area where the existing handicapped spaces are and have been for a long time.
And how about the site lighting? There was a concern about the lack of lighting coverage at the northern portion of the parking area?
The lighting is indicated on sheet five of the plans that's submitted. Basically, what we're doing, the site has existing lighting now of an age, I wouldn't even be able to start to guess what their age is, so to work around that and keep everything clean to control the design, there are existing light poles on the site which we are able to, in, in redoing the safe circulation for the site, we're able to reuse the existing light poles, all right? And they are at a, at a, at a height, I'm trying to get to the height there, I think they're like 15 or 16 feet high.
15?
15, 15 feet high. So, want to reuse the existing light pole. So, what we've done is analyze removing the existing light fixture heads and putting in ones we specify. They are going to be the LED type, a much more efficient spread use of the light, and we indicate that spread on the site. And it was pointed out that there's, that there's a spot along the motoredly row of parking spaces where technically the, the light patterns indicate that it'll drop off a little bit. What my, 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 my request is that the design as we have it be allowed to remain. It, it's only a lower level at the front end of the site where the front end of the cars would be as it faces to the north. And we really didn't want to overlight any more than necessary going offside or off the gravel area towards the, towards the residences that's, that's to the north. The average light intensity, there's a, there's a requirement for an average light intensity of .5. Any point-by-point information we'll, we'll be willing to provide subsequent as necessary, but the calculated average light intensity for the pattern as you already see it is 1.8 foot candles. So, there's adequate light, in my opinion, for the site. I don't think you need to over, overlight in an area that starts spreading towards the residences. I believe, in my opinion, that the lighting is adequate as we've shown it.
Okay, now, would these lights be on any sort of timers?
That would be a...
Yes.
You want them on timers or just when you're there, you want them manually on and off? Actually, I'm sure it could be done either way, we'll defer to what the board would like?
I, I'm going to refer to my professionals on that.
I mean, generally, I, I suggest, I mean, my board, that it's manual because then it's not on if, if it's not needed, but whatever you want.
Well, usually like, because you never know when you're going to have an event.
Right.
Usually yes, for timers. Work on photocells and then they shut off at, I don't know, nine o'clock, something like that, say an hour after your service.
Right, yeah.
Because you get out about 8:30, so I'd say 9:30.
Yes, sir.
That's fine.
Because if you have something on during the week, you, you really want it automatic and you want it off early. I understand your, your concern, actually, you have more spaces than needed and the outer limits, which goes towards the residential area, gives you a little less than .3. But that, that would, that's, that, that was my only concern. If you can, you think you can up it a little bit? Is there a way to do that with your lighting, Bill?
We could certainly take a look. You know, obviously, the, the models that you pick come in one size and then there's the next size.
Well, either the board can grant you...
Can you increase the lighting? Absolutely, but I wouldn't want to over.
Well, well, I don't have a problem with what you have, but the board's got to grant you a waiver.
Right.
And your, your outer limits going towards the residential is where the, where the spot where it drops down a little bit below .3.
Or, Mr...
If, knowing the LEDs, it's just like downtown Farmingdale, whenever they put the LEDs in there.
Oh, yeah.
They, they were blinding you there at first, now they had to go...
Which, which therefore, you know, I would recommend we grant the waiver for the, to maintain what's there. Like you said, as you get closer to the building, you maintain 1.8.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're good, and if you up the, the out, you know, to, to increase that, you're, you're also going to increase what's up closer too.
Yes.
And from a...
Go ahead, go ahead.
From an enforcement standpoint, if, if we're getting towards residences, having slightly less for complaints, it's not an easy complaint to, to fix if it comes in, so...
And based on the testimony that I've seen, that we've heard tonight, it appears that the Sunday services are over about 6:30, correct?
Yes, yes.
And that you have Bible study on Wednesdays till about 8:30. So, it's not a very frequent occurrence for them to be occupying the site at night. So, to that end, I would, I would agree with my colleagues that, you know, if you guys decide to act favorably on the application, that the waiver is something that we take no exception to either.
Well, now, I'm going to back up. Okay, since they're there, Sundays?
Yeah.
And Wednesdays, why not just have it on manual? That way they're not on during the week.
It's up to you guys.
Well, I, I'm just asking that, because if it's on timers, it's going to be...
Then I would request that it, it be turned off an hour after you're complete, no later than 9:30 PM. Right? That would work, right? Because the Bible study's over 8:30?
Yes.
Or eight, and you're there till about 8:30?
Right, yeah.
So, to, to shut off manually an hour after you're complete, no later than 9:30? Because I don't want it to, to creep, 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 and then Matt starts getting calls at 11 o'clock at night or what have you.
Right, right.
Is that something that seems reasonable to you?
Yes, that seems reasonable.
Carrie? I think that's reasonable, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Yeah, because I, I don't see having the lights on whenever nobody's there.
Well, I mean, especially like Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if there's no events in the evening, there's no reason to have the lights on.
Right.
You know, there's no reason for them to pay to have the lights on.
Exactly, that's, that's what I'm saying.
We don't need the neighborhood all lit up for no reason.
Right. Okay.
Great. Okay.
So, we're, we're going to do the waiver, the board members, do y'all have a problem or issue with doing a waiver as far as the, the intensity on the outer parking?
And I think we've already said, well, we will ma, meet the certified tree experts report, that was Jack's next thing. And I should have asked my, my client about the trash enclosure, because we, we didn't talk about it or lack thereof. Mr. Powell, can you just talk about the, the garbage and how you take it out now and what you do with it?
Well, we have a private company that picks it up, fuel cartonage, right? They, they picked it up and they are storing containers right now.
When you say containers, you mean like a big garbage can?
Yeah, a big garbage cans which are pulled out to the streets.
Okay. And they pick it up at the street?
And they pull it up on the car.
How many days per week?
Once per week.
Once per week?
Yeah.
And what type of trash do you generate?
Well, it's like paper towels, maybe our food, and that's just about it, you know, paper, you know?
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Where, where are the cans kept?
The cans are kept on the, on the south, let's say the southeast side of the building.
Okay, is it in the back by the parking lot or is it in the, actually in the lawn area? There's a sidewalk that comes along that side too.
No, not down there. It's, it's most south, down by the other shed.
By the shed?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
By the shed that's adjacent to the building or the other shed that's...
The shed that's adjacent to the building, correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
So, they, they need a waiver for the, correct?
For the trash enclosure?
Yeah.
Yes, and I would support the waiver because it doesn't appear that there's a need for it, it just seems like that would be extra pavement, extra structure unnecessarily.
Right, and they've been operating that way for years.
No, I know, but they, my, my question, just, they need a waiver for that.
Right, yes.
Correct.
Right. Okay. And I think if we, again, flip over to Ms. Beam's report, we've addressed most of the shrubs and we'll do all that.
While you're complying with Shari's requirements...
Yep. And we'll also, you know, change the plans where needed. We're looking at on four, your item's number four, really foresee we will make the change to the plan. We have, it depicts seven and yet the schedule says six and we'll make them conform.
The corrected number is seven.
Correct. And then we talked about the lighting and the put candles on that. And Jen, I think that was...
I don't, I mean, Mr. Chair, I have nothing else. We talked about the fact that this is a conditional use and why we're here and Jackie even indicated that they already received that variance previously. You know, as far as I'm concerned, this is a better condition than it's existing, so I would be supportive of the relief requested associated with, you know, paving the parking lot. And as long as you're going to comply with Shari's requirements with respect to landscaping from a planning point of view, we take no exception to the board acting favorably.
Mr. Chair, I have just one more thing.
Yes.
Ms. Winston, you going to put any signs or are you just going to leave it as it is? No signs?
Just leave it just as it is.
You got a proposed sign?
No.
No, that's right. No proposed signs.
No proposed signs.
Okay, nothing, okay, nothing in it, okay.
And just quickly on the, because I know we had Jen's testimony, but I'll let Mr. Winston as the planner, putting on that hat.
Yes, I would, that was my next question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Put some planning testimony on there.
Yeah, putting on your planning hat. We've, obviously, the testimony is that this is, is it a house of worship?
Yes.
And as such, has the courts have decided that houses worship promote the public health, safety models, general welfare, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the subject application is really proposing improvements to the traffic and pedestrian circulation, is that right?
Yes, to make it more adequate and safe to proper movement standards.
Okay. And they'll be upgrading this property, not only with the parking, but adding landscaping, trees, that type of things, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Obviously, the use is appropriate for this location at any rate because it's been there for a number of years, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The Howell Township zoning ordinance does mirror the purposes set forth in the municipal land use law, correct?
Correct.
And the, this application, in your opinion, would that meet the purposes of municipal land use law in terms of the positive criteria in, again, as we set forth in improvement to the property, improving the traffic layout, the safety and the public safety of the property itself?
For all of those things, absolutely, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Mallon indicated, but I just want you to verify, that this property has been the subject of the prior D variances in 90, 92, I believe it was, but those are the years. And this proposal is merely an improvement to the vehicular circulation, it formalizes the parking spaces and traffic lanes?
The general site follows all the criteria of prior D variances granted and this is just an improvement within the same general area of where those previous improvements were put in.
And because it is going, because, by the way, meets and promotes the general purposes of municipal land use law, by virtue of that, it will not substantially impair the purpose and intent of the Howell Township master plan, zone plan or zoning ordinance, correct?
That it will not do.
Okay. And in your opinion, will there be any negative impact on the neighborhood as a result of these improvements?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. And in your opinion, would there be any substantial detriment to the public good?
None at all.
Okay. The plan itself provides adequate light, air and open spaces, one of the purposes of the municipal land use law?
Yes.
Okay. And it provides sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of different types of uses?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I know I cut it, I tried to streamline it, but I'm happy to expand if you want anything further.
But I do have one question.
Yes.
You might already address this, but the Howell Township Fire Bureau Site Plan Review, are you aware of that?
We did just get that. Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The obvious, I think Mr. Winston talked about it the very first. We can't provide that 30-foot wide because the building is less than 30 feet from the sideline.
Okay.
Which is a pre-existing...
29.5, no, please.
The building isn't...
Right, we can't move the building.
Carrie, what about the...
And just for the record, I did send letters to all adjoining property owners looking for additional property and we got no takers.
Yes. Yeah, it's 29.51.
Yeah, that I understand.
I didn't see it. I think they just had no comment. I think there was...
Yeah. How's that, because I would just think of right over the guard.
Mr. Mallon?
I know, I know, fire, of course, we've had change in personnel, but it's been in this condition for a long time.
Okay.
And I know before there was no objection to the, what was there. It's close enough to the road that they would sit on the road anyway for that. Sometimes if you got a big area, we have, they have to get around the back of the building. In this case, I think it's close enough to the road.
Okay.
I didn't see anything from fire when I went through the...
Came in today.
Came in, okay, that's why I didn't see.
Yeah, that's kind of mishap there. It's kind of mishap to do. Now, would you be able to designate some fire, you know, fire lanes?
Fire lanes?
I mean, I would use it in the driveway up and past the building. You don't have any parking there.
Right.
Right?
Sure, that can be all designated a fire lane.
I don't even think they're actually trying to park it now. So, I think they'll play the fires from the road if there's an issue.
Right.
I understand that, but, you know, I'm just trying to accommodate the fire department.
Yeah, that's fine. We can designate that driveway up past, up to, past the building as a fire lane.
Okay.
Yes.
So, nobody can park in it.
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Posh had an engineering question.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
We're good with the impervious coverage here?
Yes.
Okay. Did you see these solos? Do you know what the ground is like over here?
I do not, but if you look, they have a large area in the back that's not touched so that, for the impervious coverage, that covers it.
I meant as far as, is this pond going to draw the water like it was, I mean?
Yes.
And what it's doing, is she going to the street already, so we...
Well, it is and it isn't. It's going into the gravel. Now, they're going to catch the water on site. What I ask for is to give me, they have an overflow channel out of the basin if it gets more than the 100-year, just to control it so it doesn't go sideways, it comes out to the road. But 9.4 inches is a lot of water to come in 24 hours.
Yeah.
And they now, they will contain that in addition to the two and, the five and 10, or two, five and 10 that Mr. Winston spoke about. I just want to make sure if it ever overtops, that it channels out to the road rather than onto the neighbors and into their septic system or the septic field.
Well, they don't have a septic, they don't have a septic field.
No, they got, well, the plan shows the approximate location. They've got sewer now, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay, any other questions from the board? C and N, any further questions or input from the professionals?
Yes, sir.
C and N, can I have a motion to open to public?
Motion open to public?
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C and N, anyone from the public wish to come forward, ask question or make a comment? Feel free to. C and N, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, C and N, would you like to do a summary?
If you need me to, Mr. Chairman.
It's up to you.
I'm fine, I think, unless you have any specific questions you want to address, I think we've submitted everything.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, looking at this application, it looks like that there is a definite improvement to what is existing today, that the parking lot will now be designated with spaces, looks like the landscaping is going to be much better, and it's a more orderly flow of traffic. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve this application, and let me see if I have all these right. So, there'll be a variance on the perimeter buffer, you will comply with the tree experts' There is one tree that you're going to replace that was cut down in the buffer, the overflow There'll be a manual for the lighting instead of having it on a timer, so then it'll be shut off no later than 9:30 p.m. There'll be a waiver for the lighting, waiver for the trash enclosure, and you will designate a fire lane by the building.
With the buffer?
With the buffer.
With the buffer also?
With the buffer.
Right, the buffer relief.
Buffer relief, yes.
Right. Yeah, you got it.
Oh, I didn't get it, okay.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. San Clemente? Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Second.
And I don't know if we didn't include it, but they need a C variance for that zone, so we should include that too?
No, they need a conditional...
A conditional use variance, which is a C.
A D3.
C3.
D3.
D3.
Which is, the requirements are similar to a both variance, that's why they equated it to it, and then they need a C variance for the buffer.
Correct, okay. Okay, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Also, with the tree permit, you know, the clearing permit, that's all going to be handled and part of a conditional use also, my vote is yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, got a voucher here. Everybody get the review there?
Yes.
Have a motion to approve voucher?
Motion to approve voucher.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call on that?
Mr. Hughes, oh, he's not here, excuse me. Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mallon had addressed me before the board. He has something that he would like to address the board about?
Yes, board members, just, I don't know if you know that I've been fighting cancer and I've been doing treatments and I've elected, I think, I would probably, August will probably be my last meetings. I've elected to stay on if need be for some of the big cases we have, L and L's won, probably C3, I would come, I'll work with T and M on it. Charlie that usually comes, he's at another meeting tonight covering for a guy that's on vacation. Been here 31 years. It's tough for me to say that, but I get very tired, don't really, you know, it's crazy for me to go home, take naps. Everybody says it's age, I don't think it's age, I think it's my condition. I've always been a go-go-go. I'm in work usually at 6:30 in the morning and many, many nights, you know, I've been here late and I'm back in the office the next morning at 6:30. So, I just wanted the board to know before you hear from someone else. I think the contract is something we have to send in a notice what's going to happen, but I just wanted the board to know that I've appreciated all of their appointments and support and unfortunately, it's more for health reasons than anything else, so I just want everyone, I want to thank everyone for all the things they've done for me. And I will be around, I told the chairman and Matt that they'll get my new number if they need me, I'm always available. My wife doesn't know what I'm going to do sitting at home all the time, but I'll find something, I'm sure. But I wanted the board to know that, so I'm looking at the August meetings probably as looking at a terminus and then if the big cases get extended, I would graciously stay on to continue those.
Okay. Mr. Mallon, I've been here 18 years on the board, it's been a pleasure. There is, I tell you what, it's not necessarily this board that's going to suffer your loss or suffer you leaving, it's going to be this township. Because I'll tell you what, the knowledge you have of Howell Township is irreplaceable. And I mean, I know, I can call you about something that happened in 1970 and you know what it is, so, you know, it's really going to be, it's totally understandable, but you are going to be well missed. And I can say that from the bottom of my heart, I know you're going to be well missed.
I will say this, Matt doesn't call me as often as he used to, he's getting pretty good at it, but he and I do converse quite a bit.
But when I call you, I really do miss you.
Yes.
So, but anyway.
You are going to be very well missed.
Okay, but it's, I don't know yet whether I'll keep the same cell phone number.
Yes.
That I have to work out with my employer, but, you know, they...
Well, it's been an honor.
They took it and I want to thank you, and I'm not gone yet.
No, I know that, but it has been an honor.
Before you hear from somebody else.
Okay.
I just want to say a couple things about Jack. You know, Jack and I started together in 1999 and that was Jack's second go-round.
Yes.
And over the years, I can tell you that from my perspective, Jack has served the board well with his wise counsel. I've learned from Jack. Jack is a font of knowledge. Maybe some of the applicants won't miss Jack. But we know we sure will and, you know, I'm sure speaking on my behalf and on behalf of the board, Jack, you know, love you, a little choked up here. And, you know, hey, it's been a great ride and best wishes to you.
I thank you very much. It's been a pleasure serving this board, it really has.
Been an honor.
Very professional, I will say that. I've served quite a few boards. This is one of the most professional that I've seen. Everybody has an opinion, you don't always agree, but that's what a zoning board's all about. That's why they pick different people and really just continue what you're doing because you do an excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
We're definitely...
We do it because of you guys sitting over there, that's, y'all are our guiding lights in this, so.
It's very difficult for me to say this too, but...
I know. Is there any further business of the board? C and N, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning Board adjourns at 8:40.